They can't see nothing, they just see me. You see that, I'm right there in the frame. But you do know that it's public information, y'all, y'all addresses. Right, okay, it's public information. Alright. This one?
No.
Okay. Beautiful. Drive off if you need to. So we are here, and this is what I mean by when Jedediah comes into town, we don't play, so I'm not going to, in respect, I'm not going to put her on there. But inside of, inside of Dalton... People will tip or not to answer. It's a ring light. So we've rang the doorbell twice, two cars in the driveway, and so we know for a fact that she gotta be home. And so, uh, we're given an opportunity, but we will be talking to Liddell Lewis at some point while we're here. Hopefully, Liddell, because I know that the ring light records. My name is Jedediah, and I am a community advocate, and I am here in the Second Ward. If you want to be re-elected, or if you want to show that you are good government, I want to talk to you about money awarded to the service organization that we think may potentially be connected to you, the ARPA funds that should be getting roofs on houses like the one on the end of your block, and what that $75,000 did to help the park right across the street. So, I'm gonna knock ring one more time, 'cause if you ain't home, it ain't bothering you. So we don't have no answer. If it ain't, if she not home, then it ain't disturbing her, right? But if she is home, I want to make sure she has ample time to get to the door. I don't know how old she is, how young she is. But we try to do this. How you doing? I'm amazing. I'm looking, you, oh, okay, I thought you, you don't live here? Okay. Alright, so it looks like we will have to keep on doing our research, and we will come back. We'll keep doing our research, and we'll come back. Maybe with more, maybe we'll bring some residents. And this is how you hold government accountable, and this is what you do, as I've always shown y'all in the video.
She brokered a bad, that neighbor right there that she was talking to. She called the police on her.
Called the police on that neighbor?
On that neighbor.
That the man just walked out of?
Yeah. They had brokered a, a little deal, but she didn't make that.
Hold on, one second, hold on, one second, I gotta ask him a question. Hey, bro, got a question. You're not on camera or nothing like this, I'm just kinda curious. Is, is that the alderman that called the police on y'all at one point?
Yeah.
Yeah, so the person who called the police on, you think I'm an activist here to help Flint? 'Cause there's a lot of corruption going on, and we finna try to deal with shit. So the woman who just called the police on, you think she would talk to me?
She should. She ain't got a, she ain't got a bitch, she ain't got no problem talking to anybody else.
So can you ask her if I come back there for me? Tell her I'ma come back there, I just want to talk to her, to figure out. I just love to figure out what.
We, we don't, her and my sister got into it, so we don't even talk. Me and her grew up together.
No, I'm talking about the person that, that she called the police on.
Oh, my, my sister, she not there.
She not there?
Nope.
Alright, well.
Well, uh, well, I can call her, and that's how she come through.
Just let her know that Jedediah will be coming on the block sooner or later, 'cause we need to find out what Liddell doing. $75,000 for that? It ain't done, all, look like ARPA funds for that, it ain't done? We need to know! Do I got a phone, it's right here? I'm, it's on the, it's, it's recording, I can't do it at the moment. I'ma be back! Oh, I'm in Flint now, baby. Oh, it's on. That's good information, you just gave, that was a good tip to have, y'all. It's going down in Flint, it's the first day. I, you know, I actually, this stuff excites me a little bit. So, we are going to be here in Flint, and right now, we need to get to Liddell Lewis, who was the alderperson of the Second Ward. And so I now know that I'ma go talk to a neighbor, 'cause she got the police called on her. Uh, but, we're gonna go to, we're gonna go to Liddell, and we're gonna ask her. So we're gonna find her, maybe at her office, maybe at her job, maybe at her house. But Liddell, here is the best advice. Why don't you reach out to me in my inbox, so that we can talk about it, and you can give me an understanding? Because if you call the police on me, you gonna be disappointed.
I'ma hear, and I'ma call them in order. They wanna put his hand up now to try to participate. That's what should happen, you sit there quiet with your hand up. But when you talk out loud, and I hear it, and it interrupt me, I'ma call the order. Just like I'ma do now. They over there now loud, and they think it's funny, but it ain't funny to me, because we didn't give them public participation. Now they wanna be council persons. It ain't gonna happen under my watch. And if it continues, and if it takes up this much time, 'cause Quincy say he wasn't here, he back. So if him and Woodson wanna make a fuss out of these meetings...
Out of order, I will rule you out of order. Please do not, okay?
You're talking now.
Please stop, please.
'Cause you're talking then, and you're talking now, I want you to make a spectacle of yourself.
And we will just discuss it. Mr. Mays, continue.
So we ain't immune to police up here. Just because police ain't here, I believe I can get some here. If this audience and these people wanna continue to operate and play games, and Ms. Galloway, if you wanna ignore it then, you just did what I did earlier. Somebody at this table will have to call people to order. And if you don't do it, and you don't hear what we hear, we gonna do it. And I'ma do it up under that roof. What I want you to tell this great city of Flint is that you got people on this council right setting up under your nose, making personal attacks on individuals and institutions. It started from an illegal email, before this council, some of them were swole. Most racist, obtuse, narcissist, misogynist. Even Ms. Worthen, as you try to hold your smile, it was side conferences, press conferences. It was so important to make these unlawful personal attacks based upon our rules, y'all, you and Ms. Fields had a press conference to do it. I sat down, listened to every word. So that's what I see, y'all see that as divisive.
Where, where in here is the, is it about the emergency management?
I'm, I can explain that, Mr. Griggs. You have. But Mr. Griggs, that's to your point of information, but I was through with that. I'm dealing with folks lying. In fact, it was said, and then I'ma wrap up, I appreciate your indulgence. It was said publicly on the record. The only time we can do business, Mr. Kurtzner, I guarantee you, this council in the city of Flint, three council people, Fields, Winfrey, Kincaid. Three of them. Litigation pending. You got three this time. Mays, Galloway, Winfrey, at least three. Making decisions, meeting. Violation of the open meeting statute. Do the business here. Make appointments and removals here, in an open meeting. And then, if they challenged, we deal with it. What I experienced here was embarrassing. What I seen on the tape was humiliating. Like, you telling the truth? We didn't meet? You used the word "meeting" out of mind, yeah. Keep rolling this finance chair, that was my mind, man. Be nice to them. What you saying, let them call you names? That ain't my style, that's your style, that's your politics. I ain't gotta be nice to folks. That ain't divisive. What's divisive, Mr. Winfrey, is when they call you names. Mean, man, that's divisive. What unity is when we kept rolling, getting five votes in spite of them. That's been destroyed. So it, it's, it's just, if the glass half empty or half full. We've been bringing people together in Flint for years. I don't appreciate you misleading this council about our private conversation. But what I do, I'm very disappointed in, is the way this council operates. And I'ma prove how disappointed I mean. I am in, 'cause it will be in litigation. We gonna get these rules straight. They mean something. This is my final thing, and I said that, nigga, but this is it. In order to suspend the rules of a one-year term, you must first get a two-thirds vote to suspend the rules, before you go back in them rules. And Ms. Fields, I heard her on the tape. Our rules deal with removals. You ain't gonna find nothing about removal in there. The only way you can remove is suspend the rules, and go back in there and reappoint. So, without a motion to suspend the rules, you're six to one vote, and I appreciate your one vote. But I should've been in the middle of the conversation, arguing that I want to continue my investigative hearings. I got subpoenas out there with Snyder. I got subpoenas out there with Rich Bear, the MDEQ, we in emergency. And here my work was snatched from under me before I could even audit, and then they vote after I'm taken out of debate. In the middle of an appeal. Don't move on the women, the police officer ain't moved yet. Ain't approached them, ain't said nothing, but when it come to the brother, they approach every time. And I will continue to talk differently to the women on this council, since I'm alleged to doing it, as long as they act the way they act. I don't talk to all women the way I talk to y'all. 'Cause all women don't walk up and call me, Megan, Megan. What's that Megan's lady name? Who, huh, daddy died, he was a senator. Megan. McCain. Megan McCain said it, and I recorded it on CNN. When somebody call you a racist, that's one of the worst things they can do. That's what she said. So if I'm to listen to Megan McCain, those who sit at this table and said I'm the most racist, Megan McCain say that's the worst tool you can pull out the box. Thank you for your indulgence. Y'all looking at the glass one way, I'm looking at it another, and I can assure you, when I finish, from the calls I done got, from people looking, I think I've been to make my point. I'll tell you just like I told you leaving out the door. God bless you. And God bless more so the citizens, the citizens of the city of Flint. My scorecard might be six to one, and this is the one. And when I hear folks on the radio, whether it's Dumas, Umus, Overton, Overton, Moverton, Flynn, Flynn, Jen, whether it's whoever, whether it's Maurice, Davis, Avis, whoever, let them do it, that's politics at its best. Whether it's an activist, whether it's Tony Palladino, Tony Malorino, whoever. It could be Kate Fields, Kate Mills, whoever. You ain't gonna get away from that. But when the people I support don't call and talk to me, the people I work with on this council don't call and talk, I'm suspicious.
Thank you, is there anyone else? Anyone else would like to speak, any more discussion?
Point of order, Madam Chair.
What's your point of order?
This is my point of order, I think we got two so, somewhat. And I ain't trying to be funny, experts on this council as it relates to this committee meeting and any further discussion. Are we locked in the two rounds in committee of five minutes each? You, you, who know the answer?
Well, we did not suspend the rules.
So that mean, on all these good items, I can't say nothing else? Y'all like that? What you laugh, what y'all laugh? This is serious. Okay, that's why I can't wait till we get these goofy rules straightened out. That don't make no sense to me. I'ma withdraw my point of order.
Thank you, Councilman Mays. Is there any more discussion?
So, do I find it inappropriate? Absolutely not, I find it very professional. And let's ask ourselves one question. Why might the North Flint Food Market be upset that it was shared? Why? Because they wanted a $7,500 popcorn maker and felt ashamed? I sure would've felt ashamed to ask this city, full of people in poverty, asking us to help them with ARPA funds for a $7,500 popcorn maker and a $5,000 caramel corn maker? My constituents thanked me for sharing that information, and said, "Thank you for being brave enough to share it." I'm, I've been here four years. There may be new people that might be timid and afraid to state their opinions and share things on social media, but I've been bullied for four years, no one else can scare me or intimidate me. I will continue to share. And if they came here and said we'd like to withdraw because of the publicity that Post got, I say my job was done. And I will continue to share public information so that my constituents know what, what is happening in this city.
What I think we should be doing, Mr. Murphy, as it relates to what's, what's Ms. Worthen talking about? She proud talking about a popcorn popper. Let Ernst &amp; Young tell us how much a popcorn popper costs. We paying a compliance firm a million dollars, and let her and some Facebook folks tell us whether or not how much a popcorn popper pop? I sure wouldn't drop it now, because they got my attention. We pay a million dollars, let Ernst &amp; Young go through everything. I know folks go to jail, I know preachers went to jail, this, that, the other, but I don't think nobody scared and embarrassed about that project, Ms. Worthen. I don't think that's why they come up and ask to drop it, cost of, the price on a popcorn popper. But prove me wrong. You should be in here in these other investigations to look at nine million or 1.5 million in the garbage investigation. Hell, I vote with you to team up to investigate a popcorn popper, but I'm not gonna let you imply that they came up quick to drop it 'cause it was some scurvy, that's your mind. I don't think these preachers and these black folks in this project primarily, there's some white folks too in it, but I'm not gonna sit here and let you talk like people scurvy, and you done did something. I dare you to let the compliance firm analyze it. That's what we gave them a million for, not for you and your Facebook friends. I don't accept your analogy. So I'm listening. I'ma wrap up, I'm listening. And I'ma protect the public reputation, the public good, minds, preachers, black folks, white folks, I ain't buying it. Now that's where I stand on it. And that's the first round, because of amended motion. Thank you, Ms. Priestley. God bless the residents of the city of Flint.
Thank you, Councilman Mays.
I'ma wrap up. I've already researched the request to drop. You get in the middle of some mess you didn't expect, you might ask to drop too. TODNMC, good, they're my partners, step up to the plate, 'cause there's some foolishness in the city of Flint. She say she ain't in politics. Where the hell you at? You is in politics. From the mayor's office to everybody setting up here, quit fooling yourself. You in politics for real? This the real big time Flint, City of Flint politics. Where you think you at? Shirts? Where you think you at? The social club?
Councilman Mays.
Yeah, where they think, they at Toys R Us?
Your time is...
You in politics. God bless the residents of the city of Flint. I'ma do my political job.
Thank you, Councilman.
Keep an eye out.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak in the second round?
The Lord blessed me with a strong voice. I've been on this council, been in this city for 30 years. It ain't nobody been...
Point of order. What's your point of order?
Is there a motion on the floor?
No, there is not a motion on the floor.
Rule state that there should be a motion on the floor.
Point of, point of information, aren't we in discussion, Ms. Worthen?
We just, we just voted.
Right, and we done with the resolutions?
We're done with the resolutions.
And don't the agenda showed in discussion after that?
Those are discussion items that should be listed.
Excuse me, um...
She got a point of order.
We are, we are now on to discussion items.
That's correct.
Madam Chair.
I got the floor. Point of order, I had the floor.
Point of order.
And I was discussing some items.
What's your point of order, Ms. Worthen?
There are no discussion items, so I'm asking you to rule that Mr. Mays is out of order.
You can ring up and hang out in discussion if you want.
Um, Ms. Worthen, I'm not going to rule that he's out of order. I'm gonna allow him to finish for discussion items.
I appeal the ruling. I appeal the ruling of the chair.
There's a feeling to the ruling of the chair, is there a second? Is there a second?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I'll second that for informational purposes.
It has been, it has been seconded? Is there any discussion?
You go first, I'm why you ruled, then they can, we can all, you know.
Uh, I ruled that because we're in discussion. And I'm gonna allow him to go ahead to discuss, so we can wrap up, to finish this up, so we can move out. Um, any more discussion?
Madam Chair.
I'll be both at the same time. Ms. Worthen?
Discussion is discussion items, not just, anyone can get the floor to talk about their trip to Disney World, their, you know, dislike of fellow colleagues, how long they've been on council. There are no discussion items. The, the proper motion next would be adjournment, and then we can finally move on to other committees before midnight. So, um, I'm gonna vote no, because there are no discussion items to discuss, and it wasn't, and the agenda was not changed. Thank you.
Councilman Mays, you have the floor.
Yeah, Madam Chair. If you, if, if Ms. Worthen appealed that Ms. Lewis seconded, get five votes, I might flip my wig, and I ain't even got a wig on. So I'm putting myself out there bad. I might just flip my wig.
Hey, I don't understand why we going back and forth. See, it takes longer to do an appeal than to just keep the meeting moving. We could've been adjourned already. So I don't understand. But I am gonna say this, at nine o'clock, I will be leaving the city council chambers. So we might need to go ahead and move this forward and adjourn this meeting so that we can get into governmental ops. This is ridiculous, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Councilwoman Winfrey Carter. Is there anyone else who would like to speak for discussion on the appeal of the ruling to allow for discussion? Alright, Madam Clerk, let's get roll call.
Point of order.
What's your point?
State the yes sustains the vote of the chair, or no. Would say the appeal had validity, so...
Thank you. A vote yes would be for the chair, a vote no would be for Councilwoman Worthen.
Okay. I'll start with Ms. Winfrey Carter.
Yes.
Yes. Ms. Burns?
Yes.
Ms. Herkenroeder?
No.
Ms. Worthen?
No.
Mr. Mays?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
No.
Mr. Murphy?
No.
Ms. Priestley?
No.
The vote is three yes and five no. Madam Chair?
Um, so, so the ruling, the, is three yes, five no. That means that discussion is not allowed, Ms. Worthen?
Uh, I move that we adjourn Finance Committee.
I do need to make an announcement before about our budget.
Point of order, Madam Chair. Ms. Brown done messed that up, they done voted and messed that up. She made a motion to adjourn. Point of order, ask for a second.
Can I get a second?
I haven't messed anything up.
This, this is...
Madam Chair.
Yes, Councilwoman Worthen?
I withdraw that if you have an announcement.
Thank you.
Point of order.
What's your point of order?
Madam Chair, this council ain't run by the clerk and the staff. We, say, they just voted to stick with the agenda. No discussion items, we had adjournment. They, Ms. Brown even told them, "You gotta vote to put something in there." You don't have to vote, we ain't voted like that, but now she want an announcement, people wanna make it, that's hypocritical. It was not even right in the first place that we had to vote. I've been on this council for nine years, and so it would be under discussion, announcement, anything. We had adjournment. If y'all gonna be right, you move to adjourn. That's what they just voted, we had to go to in the agenda. That's what they just, five of them just voted. It ain't nothing there, ain't nothing else there, stick with the agenda, we should be at adjournment. All in favor, five voted. Now here they is discriminating again. Oh, I withdraw the motion, oh, we make this announcement, oh, we can do it now, we ain't got a vote on it. I mean, do what you want, but I'ma talk about it, I'ma talk about the different... If, Mr. Davis, if you wanna take an initiative on a project, whether it's housing, whether it's streets, whether it's black, that's your project. The problem we got here with Ms. Galloway, in particular, she want authority and wanna work on stuff and then come in here, I'm giving reports, but when it come to me, beg your pardon, Ms. Galloway, I'm giving you your second one. And I'ma ask if I have to warn you a third time, you remove yourself. That's fair, 'cause that's what you do with me. But you don't like it when folk talk bad about you, but you like it when Ms. Fields talk bad about me, 'cause you don't check her, it go over your head, 'cause you want her vote. You want her vote for something, and Mr. Griggs won't, I mean, Galloway won't. That's the only way you can get what you want. You got to cater to them folks politically to put together five votes, 'cause some of us ain't buying it. And so I'm here to tell you, Ms. Galloway, when I work on a project for a year, or two, or three, give me the respect to answer questions that I know the answer to that Mr. Branch ain't worked on. Give me respect to answer questions I can answer questions to that Ms. Attorney Reed ain't worked on.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, yes.
My name is Arthur Woodson. Uh, Ms. Fields, you pick up all the time trying to prevent people from expressing or exercising their constitutional rights by being able to speak. You and Councilwoman Worthen and Councilman Davis, you all need to resign, because you all are...
Mr. Woodson, you're out of order. You're out of order.
Point of order. Point of order.
And you?
Point of order.
That's an attack.
Point of order.
What is your point of order?
Point of order. I appeal the ruling of the chair. I appeal the ruling of the chair.
They can appeal to the ruling of the chair, is there a second? Is there a second?
Yes, Madam President, I'll support that.
Ms. Winfrey Carter has supported that. Okay, Mr. Woodson is going down the trail of attacking individuals, again, and making, um, kind of a bail threat that we need to resign our offices. I am simply trying to do what our parliamentarian told us, which is, we should not allow the public or other council members to threaten, attack, et cetera, each other. So, that's all I'm trying to do.
Madam President?
Mr. Mays, would you like to speak?
Yeah, the tape has been made, the recording is made. My memory, God bless me with a brain. What Mr. Woodson said was that you should resign. I had mayors, emergency managers, council people standing on TV, all channels, asking for my resignation. Ain't no threat of personal attack or road guarantee for a member of the public to ask for my resignation publicly, yours or nobody else. He wasn't going down no road. You going down a road of abridging people's constitutional rights on record, and I've got a duty and a responsibility to protect it. I'ma protect mine, I'ma protect theirs, I'ma protect the first... I'mma protect mine, I'mma protect theirs, I'mma protect the first wards, and so, that's who's going down the road, and this appeal hopefully will stop it. People can ask for people's resignation, how dare you?
Would anyone else like to discuss this appeal?
Madam President.
Uh, Ms. Worthen?
Yeah, I'd like to thank you for. Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
So, we should stop this right now, otherwise, it's gonna be exactly the way it was before, constant attack. Mr. Woodson should be able to get his point across, without telling people they should resign, uh, you know, calling them names and whatnot, so let's, let's do this right, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Worthen, any other discussion on this appeal? Madam President. Uh, Ms. Galloway.
Thank you, um, you know what, I'm not gonna even waste the time of the, um, attorney to weigh in on this, but, you guys, this is not appropriate. Our, she just said, they have a freedom of speech, we saw our very legislators on the federal level, demanding resignation of their colleagues, and so if they who sit in places, that's not an attack, it's not an attack for somebody to say you need to resign.
So I would be voting to support him being able to say any and everything he want to, thank you for indulgence.
Thank you, Mr. Davis, any other discussion on this appeal? Okay, lastly, I like to say, I hear my colleagues, and I think in my mind, uh, what I heard was an attack. If you don't agree that was an attack, if you think it was just short of an attack, and he has the right to say we should resign, I, I can kinda see your point. Um, I'll still be supporting, um, my own ruling, because the public has gone way too far, and Mr. Woodson, uh, I guess I'm so used to hearing Mr. Woodson a- attack council, that maybe my mind went to his next statement, which is, normally he tries to recall everybody, so, um, roll call, Madam Clerk. If you vote.
Point of order.
Mr. Mays, what is your point of order?
That was my point before roll call, clarify the vote.
Well, Mr. Mays, if, if you could just hold off a nanosecond, a- and let me complete my sentences without interrupting me, you would've heard that that's what I was saying. And so that point of order wasn't necessary. The, um, vote is, if you agree with the chair, that, uh, it was an attack and he deserved a warning, vote yes. If you agree with, uh, Mr. Mays, that it was not an attack, then, uh, you vote no. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Mays?
No.
Mr. Davis?
No.
Ms. Fields?
Yes.
Ms. Winfrey Carter?
No.
Mr. Winfrey?
No.
Ms. Galloway?
No.
Mr. Griggs?
No.
Ms. Worthen?
Yes.
Two yes, six no.
Two yes, six no, the appeal wins, so we will go back to Mr. Woodson, and, uh, Janelle, have you started his time again?